Good morning. Today's Tuesday, April thirteenth. Time is nine oh one. The board's in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. And with us, we have Bob Perkins and we have, go ahead.
Chair Triple for clerk's office.
Triple clerk's office. And we have Mr. Paul Batista, we have IT guy, and we have.
Tim Klein, Treasurer.
Treasurer, yes. And we have on the few people online Daisy, Paul, Brad. And Ruth Fird, and Annie, she's online too. All right, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are none.
Okay, we have an item to, first item is open our meeting today with the ratification of Elmore County's appointment of Betty Ann Nettleton to the Central District Health Board of Health. She's up for a reappointment. She's the current chairman of the board, as I recall. And Elmore County, they're a little, they're moving rapidly because term doesn't actually expire till June. But I guess they want to get a little head of the game, so.
Here for a motion?
May I have a motion?
I'll move to approve and ratify Elmore County's appointment of Betty Ann Nettleton to the Central District Health Department Board. Term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like we'll send over the ballot to the Central District Health with three aye votes. And that unfinished business, may I have a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table?
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have the.
All those in favor.
All those in favor of removing unfinished business from the table, thank you.
Aye.
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 I'm not sure we take this up. We don't have it. The bylaws.
I think we're going to table that.
We'll have to table it again.
Retable it.
They wanted to change it a little bit more, and so we'll.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to retable the Citizen Advisory Committee for elected official compensation bylaws to April twentieth, twenty twenty one. This is a retabling.
Retable. Do we have a motion there?
I'll second that.
The move and second, and for the discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have procurement, Bob Perkins with us for for award of bid two one zero four five.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before you this morning, we have the award of bid two one zero four five, Ada County Juvenile Court Services Generator and Switchboard Replacement, twenty twenty one. We were prepared to go forward with an award today, but the evaluation team would like some more time to continue their due diligence for this project. And we would like to retable this project for further consideration to the May fourth, two thousand twenty one, open business meeting.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to retable the award of bid two one zero four five, Ada County Juvenile Court Services Generator and Switchboard Replacement, twenty twenty one, to May fourth, twenty twenty one, for further consideration.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
All those in, for the discussion from the commission, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We've retabled it for you then.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Now we have a public hearing. Resolution for sole source contract for professional services related Ada County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan update. I'm going to open the public hearing on resolution two six one seven. Is there anyone like to provide testimony?
Mr. Chair, I believe Paul, AKA Crash, is online, and Crash would probably like to maybe state a few words for the board, why this is important.
Okay. Paul?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Thank you very much. You missed the opportunity to speak. This is part of a five-year update process that we have to do in accordance with federal regulations. This is the same contractor we've used the last two updates of the plan. We are currently using some software to support the plan that is proprietary to this particular contractor, which is why we requested the sole source. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is important to our community in many ways, as we do to try to reduce the risk of natural hazards throughout the community. But it does have some side benefits, such as it allows us to gain more points in the community rating system, which can help lower the flood insurance rates to our citizens. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Do we have any questions from the board?
No.
No, thanks Crash.
Thanks. Crash?
You're welcome.
Yeah, appropriate, right? All threats sell hazards.
Oh, okay. Is there any discussion from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two six one seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
I'm now going to close the public hearing. I'll now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two six one seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, in case some of you are wondering, Center for Disease Control says if you've had, if you've been vaccinated, and most everybody in the room has been vaccinated, mask is not necessary, so it's up to you. If there's anybody uncomfortable with me not wearing a mask, let me know and I'll put it on.
Mr. Chair, I'm uncomfortable with a lot of things, but that's not one of them.
Well, there's a lot of us that way. That's good.
That's fine.
Okay. We now have before us licenses. Up next, peddler's solicitor license. Was that you? Peddler's solicitor?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
I think we probably have Daisy up there who can speak to this.
Yeah, we have Daisy Lewis with the clerk's office to provide us some additional information. Daisy?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We do peddler's licenses with the county when people want to do door-to-door sales or solicitation within the unincorporated areas of Ada County. So we require them to submit fingerprints to us in an application, and then we do an FBI background check. This particular peddler's license is for solar sales, and we have recommended denial on Mr. Hadlock's application. He, we follow section four one six in Ada County Code, and that states that we shall deny the application if they have any misrepresentation or false statement on there. He put not applicable underneath his previous charges, and you can see attached to his application is some charges for felony.
Okay.
Charges, I guess.
So, he's supposed to notify us if he has criminal background, and he didn't? Is that the idea? Or can he not get peddler's license if he has a criminal background?
Well, he can get a peddler's license if his felony charges have been within fifteen years. So if it's been longer than fifteen years since he's pled guilty to felony charges, or longer than five years to misdemeanor charges. He also has a felony charge on his record that has been within the last fifteen years, for which he served time and pled guilty. He was imprisoned in two thousand ten for receipt of stolen property.
Well, so both. Okay.
Yeah, he also, we found out during the background check that there were different instances in Pennsylvania where he was also convicted for peddling without a license, and if anybody's done that within their entire life, that we shall deny the application as well. So there's kind of three levels to the denial on this one.
So he has multiple reasons for denying him the license then?
Correct.
Okay. Well, may I have a motion on peddler, is there any more discussion?
No, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead. I'm ready, unless Mr. Rick Fisher-Davidson?
Well, just one question. So under our, I guess it's our county ordinance, are we discussing? There's, absent the fifteen years, there's no provision to, for commissioners to override that, or is that written in stone?
It does say shall deny on the code, so it's, I think, interpreted that we will deny it. It is up to the commissioners whether they want to approve it or not, I believe. And he also has an appeal process where he can come in front of you and kind of plead his case too, which would be the next step.
Okay.
With that then, I'm going to go ahead, Mr. Chair. If you're ready, I'll move to deny the peddler solicitor license as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the prepping documents on behalf of the board, or not sign, in this case.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Now let's take up the remaining licenses. Are there any questions or discussions on the big list of licenses?
I've looked at all of those licenses, renewals and transfers, and one new one. And I'll move to approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including the one new license. One license transfer, forty-six license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion, any more discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving right along. We have clerk's office with the designation of polling places for the May eighteenth election. Want to discuss that any, or just?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioners. Before you is the list of designated polling places that we'd like to use for the May eighteenth election, for those library districts for both Kuna and Meridian. We're asking the board to approve those, so that we can continue on with equipping, training, and getting things in motion.
So that, so we have two library districts that are up for election. I actually saw a yard sign from a fellow who's running for the library district.
Tyler?
Yeah. Only reason I saw it is because he put it on, online, because I don't think I could have seen it otherwise. It was so light. May I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-four dash three zero two to designate the polling places as presented by the clerk's office.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We have next up the Claims Journal. Is there any discussion on the Claims Journal? Not? May I have, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated April ninth, twenty twenty one.
May I have a second on the claim, plea in the Claims Journal?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, our personnel actions. Do we have a motion?
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, that the summary sheet you made on the file in Commissioner's office.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll now take up tax cancellation.
Mr. Chair, I believe the assessor's office is next, isn't it?
Yeah, assessor's office. Are there any updates, Bob? And Bob's not there.
Trent's, Eric is.
Yeah, so this is Brad. Eric, good morning, Commissioners. Bob had a medical appointment this morning, so he's not able to attend. But we do have six tax cancellations on the agenda this morning, and they all have to do with exemptions. Couple of them are homestead exemptions, and then a casualty loss, and a site improvement exemption.
Are they homestead or homeowner's exemptions?
Technically, by statute, it's homestead, but most people call it homeowner's exemption. Same with like, circuit breaker is property tax reduction, but.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And this was all due to county error, correct?
Five of the six are in miscalculation of the exemptions. The sixth one is actually a casualty loss, which was the mobile home that burned from an electrical fire, so I'd like to think we didn't have anything to do with that.
No.
Well, I would hope not. All right, I'll entertain a motion on tax cancellations.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for two thousand eighteen, one tax cancellation for two thousand nineteen, and four tax cancellations for two thousand twenty, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Is there further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Brad?
Thank you.
We now have the treasurer's office with, we have Tim here. Tim, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have the March portfolio summary that I submitted to the board. Just thought I'd highlight some of the key things that took place in the past month. One of them was we did have, one of our agency bond was called. I think that had a coupon of one point five percent. If you look at the prevailing rates out there now, it's no surprise that that was called, because we're seeing about point two, a range of maybe point two, point three for these similar type of agency bonds. Also, we made three new purchases for just under fifteen million. We tried to buy mortgage-backed securities around the five million mark for each of them, and the final price was just under fifteen million for those three.
Is that the DBF?
That's the mortgage-backed securities on the front page.
Oh, there we go. Okay, I'm showing.
Yeah, the fifth line down.
Okay, yeah, I know, I show thirty. Where do you show the fifteen?
Well, this is all of them.
Okay.
Some of them were existing, and then we, so if you looked at last month, you'd see about fifteen million less in last month if you compare it.
So we added fifteen million, okay.
Yes. The other thing is, and we've talked about this in the past, is just how we're off right now with the auditor.
We've never been off that much before.
Yeah.
One point two million?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, we balance it every day. And we, because of the, the clerk's office has the new system, and it's not communicating entirely with Fab, and we, the treasurer's office, balanced to Fab, we're seeing that number grow. However, and that's why I attached on the very back of it our balancing sheet here, which, we've always submitted this in the past, and normally you see one item or two, sometimes none on there. But this time I circled it, and the reason why is because typically in the box below it, we'd put our explanations of what they were. But now, there's so many items on there that I have an Excel spreadsheet that I also attached, and if you look at that, you can see we know exactly what each of those items are. They're typically related to, you know, payroll, we have empower retirement, Percy, and that sort of thing. We also do occasionally get carryover items that just are on there for one day, and that's what happened here. We had a very large carryover item, which was the one.
One million, one ninety-four.
Yeah, and that disappeared like the next day. So that's, when you look at these reports, I just wanted to kind of explain that, so that as you're looking at it, it kind of makes more sense for you. We'll have the balancing page that we do daily on the back, and I circled that with a red circle this time. And then the description behind it with the Excel spreadsheet. So we know exactly what everything is. So in that sense, we are in balance with the auditor, and once our systems are communicating together again, all these will true up and we'll be back to the way it used to work. Other than that, the investments have been fairly static. We're seeing a range of movement with the bond market, which affects our type of investments. And it's hard to say where they'll go going forward, but we monitor it continuously. We have our investment advisor also doing that for us as well.
So you have, you just have two computers that don't want to talk to each other?
Yeah, our systems, yeah. And I don't know how much, you've heard about all of that. I know Trent and his group has been working on this, and maybe, Trent, if I'm saying it wrong, please correct me, but I think they're, they're making progress, and eventually we'll get it worked out.
I hope we do. We will, we will, Mr. Chairman, the new system, the payroll system, has reports that it puts out, and the interface between that new system and our existing Fab system, which is where we balance the books, it just has some inconsistencies in it right now that we're trying to work out. We have IT working on the programming for it. That was one of the things that we kept in-house and didn't have a contractor do for us. And so it's just a challenge to get every cent coming out of that new system tied to the right account when it comes to costing, and that's where we're having the trouble. You know, before, the Fab system collected all those things very accurately, but now Ada Central, which is a system we're using, has them in there, but we're having to go through millions of lines of costing data to make sure that it gets put into the right account. And the first several payrolls, it was very difficult to identify all of them. And so now, the most recent payrolls are clean, and so going forward in those payrolls, we're okay. But the problem is, the previous payrolls, we now have to go back and identify every single line item. And it's down to, you know, fifty cents of FSA accounts and parking things, and everything else that has to do with an employee's payroll has to go into the right costing account before we send it over to Fab. So in the interim, we have, because I know a lot of the departments are worried about the budgeting process coming up and knowing where they are in the current year. We have provided them with a pretty accurate estimate of where those accounts are, but they're not accountant-proof, i.e. they're not down to the cent, which is, I know what we want folks to balance to. But they have a good idea of how much is in their personnel budgets, how much is in their operating budgets, as of today.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Trent, about, how long are you thinking before this is completely reconciled?
I think it could be three or four weeks.
Oh.
At the best.
For months at the worst.
It could be months before we get caught up. It's just the, you know, now we have the new Recovery Act money that's coming in, and our auditors are just getting slammed, and so keeping afloat and then dealing with all the stuff that had happened is a balancing act. We're trying to hire an additional accountant slash finance specialist in our department to help get us caught up with those things. But again, most of this is to deal with IT program, and IT is, they're working their heart out to try to get it to work properly, so. Lot of moving parts.
I appreciate the attention to detail and showing the board exactly, Tim, where this is going and why. And the Excel spreadsheet, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks. That's, it's difficult when you get computer messed up like that. It's hard to get it back to back in order. Thanks anyway for your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, now.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead if you're ready for a motion for the approval of minutes.
I'm ready.
All right, then I approve, move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
All right. Is there further, any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Little bop.
Commissioners, Chairman?
We have some events going on.
We do.
I understood you had a good Comic-Con event over the weekend.
We did. It was, it was a good event for us. We also had a little bit of flag football that we got a little tuned up, if you will. We're trying to keep everybody safe, and it's still a lot of in the hands of the personnel, of the people, so. What we have before you is four events. The quilt show is going to be in May twentieth. And that show's going to be relatively speaking, going to be a good clean show, in the sense those folks are the older generations, and they're going to be vaccinated and masked up pretty, pretty well, I presume. The jiu-jitsu show is about two months away, so they're just sending in their stuff to CDC, CDHs, excuse me. The RV show is outside, and that's just right after fair, and then the two thousand twenty-one dog show, that's the big dog show that takes up the whole entire grounds in October. So you're going to start seeing events that we've usually start booking now for the fall, and that's coming up, so, yeah. Nope, it was a good weekend for us, and so we're here to present a few events to you.
So I understand there's a lot of people at that Comic-Con show.
It's pretty popular. You know, people are dying to do anything right now.
And they all wear their masks because they like that scenario, so it was, it was really a good show.
I did get to attend that one. And so the, the sponsor had some issue with his check-in software. I guess they were trying to do on the, on the app and it malfunctioned. So they ended up having a line that stretched back to about Fred Myers. So that's on them, but I was curious, does the fair, if a vendor runs into something like that, is there any extra fare at the staff that could help check people in? Or do you just have the exact amount of people ordered for the weekend?
Right now, we're, we're going through a shortage of staff, like a lot of people are. We've had some people move. So it wasn't a shortage of staff, it's just we staff that accordingly. And when you get into those problems, it's a software issue. We could probably help them, but it's at the direction of the promoter of how they want to go about it. So a lot of times they get focused in on their world, if you will, and kind of go down the road of what they think they should be done. We are there to help. We do have some good experience at that. But when the ticketing system fails, it's pretty much you need to go manual.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what I think they ended up doing.
Yeah. So you may hear some complaints about long lines out there, but that was obviously on them, so.
Yep, yep. Other than that, I think everybody had a good time there from what I heard.
Yeah, all the, the celebrities there, I think were good ambassadors. And we're happy to be just anywhere because, you know, a lot of them do the convention circuit and it's been pretty limited the last year, so. I think they were, they were very gracious to their fans. I got to meet some of them.
Good.
It was a good experience, so.
Great.
Good. Well, are there any questions or discussions on the four interim event agreements? If not, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the four interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Is there any, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Appreciate it.
We'll now take up two Barber Park events. Is there any discussion? Do we have?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion on that, but I'd like to go ahead and pull out the first one, 14171, and have this added to our legal agenda for Lorna to come and discuss this MOU with us. We've not had an opportunity to discuss it and had a couple of questions. So I'll make the motion then to.
Well, you're talking about the agreements. We're talking about the Barber Park.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at the agreement. No problem with Barber Park. I'll go ahead and make the motion then.
All right.
Okay, so I move to approve the two Barber Park Education Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Chair, I will second that.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Now we're taking up the agreements. Now, which one did you want to pull?
Yeah, sorry, I was jumping ahead reading that, so I wasn't paying attention to parks. Sorry, Coburg, if you're listening. Yeah, 14171.
The first one?
Yeah, the first one. There's just.
Ada County and Department of Water Resources.
Yeah, it's a Barber Dam flow bypass, and since we sold it, but it's still pending.
Right.
I'd like to find out if we have any risk for the county involved in that, just understand a little bit better.
Okay, you can make a unanimous consent request. Pull that one.
Okay, I move for unanimous consent to pull Agreement 14171.
Hearing no objection, that's pulled. Now we can do any other motion on the other agreements?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the other 11 agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Not.
So you five, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
We're in recess. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, April 13th. The time is?
Uh, it looks like it's 9:32.
The time is 9:32 according to our official timekeeper?
You have to have a job. I'm no longer chair. He had to assign me something to do.
Yeah, but she left the gavel here.
I know, big mistake. Big mistake.
The Board of Commissioners sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Service District is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. We have Sean present as well. We have the IT guy.
The famous, the infamous IT guy.
Right. Okay. Our, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
We have the Claims Journal up next. I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated April 9th, 2021 regarding EMS expenditures.
Second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion on the personnel actions?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
He's on a roll.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that as well.
Is there any discussion on it, on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, you got a good report for us?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Yesterday, we had a pretty good work session with our Access Joint Powers Administrative Committee Group. We met for about four hours and worked through some issues. Some of the language in the GPA contract that had the executive board, it lined out things that the executive board was, were supposed to be doing that we've never really done. And kind of simplified things to have the administrative committee recommend changes to the board as opposed to having the board do the work. It just made more sense. I worked on some joint deployment discussions. And I think what it's going to probably end up leading to down the road is maybe a weeks-long work session where we all sit down together and build a five-year master plan for the system. What ends up happening is we all tend, and I, I'm guilty of this myself, is we all go back to our own agencies and start planning where we're going to put stations or ambulances, that type of thing. And we need to do that together as opposed to doing it separately so that we're all aware of where a station's going so that I'm not looking at putting one half a mile from where a fire station's going to be where we can build something together cheaper. So it was a good meeting. We got a lot done yesterday and look forward to continuing that effort.
So, Mr. Chair, Sean, have you ever, when you guys co-locate and you're going out together and you could go out together, have you ever tried to negotiate with the union to allow less firefighters if you have EMS paramedics on the same vehicles?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, we've never done that. You know, typically that their contracts, and it's, it's dependent on the department. I believe Boise's on like a four-year contract cycle. Some of them are on three-year contract cycles. So we've never, the EMS department's never gotten into those negotiations with them. Most of the situations where we co-locate, it would be an engine company and an EMS crew, so a total of five people at that station. They do have some stations where they co-locate a truck company, which has four people on it, and then an engine usually in that same house. Station four would be a good example of that. They have truck four, engine four, and battalion two all in that same station, but we don't co-locate an ambulance there. We do co-locate at engine three or at station three, where it's just that one engine company in our ambulance. Station eight, which is the same situation than station 10 in Boise. I have been talking to the new Chief Bloom from Ridian Fire about co-locating at their station seven, which is actually Locust Grove and Amity area, which would give us good coverage for South Ridian, South Boise, and good seconding coverage for the Kuna area. So, you know, and, and one thing that we do, and we did this at station three, is we pitch, pitch in money on the build of the station. It gives us ownership in the station so that we don't walk in and, and, you know, have them kind of dictating what's going to happen in the station if we own a portion of it too. So as budgets come forward in the, the coming years, I'll probably be asking for some money to, to help build a, a co-located station. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And I'm going kind of back to, you know, Kuna. They, they didn't try to negotiate down on raising that to a three-person limit and so the truck can't go out at all, which makes absolutely no sense to me. And especially if we can kind of combine a medical ambulance with, you know, a fire truck, you know, they should be able to go. So there's just a lot of things I want to try to, to take a deeper dive on. As you all know, I'll talk more Monday about it. How, how would we go about, I'd like to take a look at the budgets from all the, this last year's budget from all the fire districts and fire departments. What's an easy way to round that data up?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, I can reach out to the chiefs and see if they'll just give us the budgets. I imagine they probably will. I don't imagine they'd have any heartbreak.
You'd think it should be online.
Most of them probably would be online. Some of the smaller departments don't have quite the IT resources. Some of their webpages aren't very robust, but I, I doubt that any of them would object, so.
Okay, yeah, it should be public knowledge and, and public information. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of how the money's spent, where it's spent, et cetera, because we're up to about 80 million in this, in this valley a year for, just for fire alone. And then you add EMS, so it's a pretty hefty line item.
It is.
That we need to, I think, take a look at. Steve, were you mumbling up there?
I was. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I, I did round up, I thought I gave it to you, Commissioner Kenyon. I rounded up what I could get for the, the taxes collected for the fire districts and the budgets where they were applicable. Like, I tried to get budgets for fire departments in the valley, or in Ada County at least, for what I could get online. That was, that stack of information. Again, I said, I thought I gave it to you.
Yeah, I did. I looked through that, so that's their entire budgets. That's all they're showing, huh?
Yes, that's all I put my fingers on.
Okay, all right. We'll go through that together on Monday then and see just what additional information that would be useful.
Well, I have a question for you. What's your average, your daily COVID rides?
We're still sitting at around three patients a day, you know. It's kind of ticked up and ticked down, but it's, it's kind of leveled out. So I look at that every day just to see if we're starting to see an uptick and.
We're not.
Not yet.
It was two and today this, it's three now, so that's just, that, that's such a small.
Yeah, it could be just noise.
Yeah, that wouldn't, that wouldn't have an impact. Because what was the, what was the height of your?
At the height, when we hit right after Thanksgiving, I think the height was December 2nd. We were seeing, I believe it was 15 a day at that point. So we hit that peak.
Yeah, so that seems to be a pretty good barometer if you look at the, what the numbers we get from the Central District Health. Your numbers kind of, because they don't have your numbers, but.
Right.
But, but it tracks.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, too, I think it'd be interesting for, for this board also to have the coroner report in on deaths because to me, that's the ultimate, you know, sign of success or not, whether we're, people are staying alive or they're dying. So we don't tend to have that, that data that's at least reported to us.
Well, we could, yeah, we could ask, ask her for that, that data. What would be correspondent to that would be, was, was this virus the sole cause of that? Because I'm getting the impression that it's rarely the sole cause. It's, it may have been exacerbated in another.
And that would be on that report.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, because that's, that's, that seems to be the, the, the. Another, another interesting statistic, I got a friend, a doctor, he told me the other day that, that there's been way fewer this year of actual influenza tests. Flu tests.
You're saying allergies too. Allergies are, are down too because of filters, you know, yeah.
And so, you know, that, and, and, and so to me, what would be really valuable statistic is there's always a certain amount of people in the United States die every year. I wonder how, how that's changed this last year, if it changed at all.
Yeah, I think it, yeah, what was I looking at? It was like 2% or something more. I looked at those, but that was in the beginning.
I don't know. I thought I'd be interested in seeing like for the whole calendar year and see what.
I do know twice as many people are born in the United States than die every year. About, about twice as many, which is alarming statistic.
Well, it's better than the opposite of that. There's some countries are dying because.
Well, yeah, but we should have more of a balance.
Their birth rate, I'm not sure that's, that's an accurate number, but, but, but the birth rates are, are really important to maintaining in that country.
Sure.
To get more people dying than being born, that, that doesn't last too long. Anyway, is there anything else? We're, we're kind of straying.
Yeah, we'd like to see Sean in person, so we're just going to have a little chat with you about anything and everything. World of bats.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah, let's do. And if you wouldn't mind, let's get Dottie to give the board just over maybe the last three months.
Three months?
Or six months. I don't know. What do you think, Chair?
Oh, it depends on her, how much she wants to work at it. I mean.
Oh, she's got the numbers.
She's got the numbers. You probably just pull them up, bring them over.
Six months, six months. Just so we can track it.
Yeah, that'd be, that would be an interesting statistic, or an interesting number to, to see how that tracks with the national numbers and so forth. But anyway, yeah, we can do that.
So your PPE supply is still strong?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, PPE has been a lot easier to come by, you know, in the last six months, we can buy it. And I have Amy maintaining a level of around, somewhere between 40,000 and 50,000 in 95 masks. We started this with 36,000, thank goodness, just because we, we prepared back in the mid 2000s. You know, Canyon County, I was talking to them last week. They started with under 1,000 masks beginning of this. I don't know how they made it through.
Reused them?
Yeah.
Probably, yeah.
We did a lot of that, too. Lysol. Putting that surgical mask over the top of your N95 to keep it clean. There was a lot of that. It's been a crazy year.
It has. And hopefully, it seems to me we're, we're getting out of it. I'm glad they are.
Fingers crossed.
One more quick question. Do we co-locate out at Whitney?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, no. We, we co-locate at station eight. We looked at co-locating at station 14. We looked at co-locating in Station Fourteen when we built that.
Is that Whitney Fourteen?
That's Whitney, yeah. Um, and I can't remember why we didn't end up moving in with them. The station was plenty big enough. They do house their hazmat, um, equipment out there, which is a lot of equipment.
Okay, I wondered why that thing is so big, yeah.
Trailers, they have their incident management team trailer. Just from working there, I know that they are out of space to house the equipment that they have currently. Um, but so instead of that, we ended up buying Medic Two Five, which is an industrial condo, um, out off of Am- Amity and, um, between Coal and Maple Grove out there. And we got into that for, gosh, like three hundred fifty thousand back, you know, the economy was, during, it was kind of during the downturn. But we got into that pretty reasonably. It's not ideal, but it works.
Okay. Well, unless you have anything else for us, we're gonna be in recess. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sean, good to see you in person.